Oh, false answer. Um, the question being asked today, they came to public, we like that in the last few weeks. Um, for my member now, I have questions we ask, many of these are similar, um, and we're online. If any questions are not asked, but then we will do a little more, um, if you can't answer them, if you choose to answer, you can provide a response on YouTube, so we can see how public that happens. Um, for my member, so we'll actually go into YouTube chat. Uh, we're gonna start with an introduction of each, which would be two minutes each. Uh, after the introduction, we're gonna ask your questions, and then we will be given an opportunity to answer your questions first. Um, the response to these questions will have a one minute time limit. So all questions are gonna ask, we'll provide a response, you will provide a answer.
PTO Trust, everyone here, we're gonna touch on tonight, I'm sure there are lots of tomorrow ones, I mean, we have our time, I'm sure, Susan, and then, who will hold up another 30 second warning sign, I'm ready, well, the time is running, we have all candidates back by the frame, remaining within the time I am ready. Uh, okay, it's the issue, Shannon, JJ Fox, Longmont, Richard Schaffner, and Babs.
This is a reminder that the voting may take place today on a Monday. All right, so we've been starting with introductions, so Brandon, would you like to review?
Thank you very much, thank you, the PTO Trust president on, my name is President Partey, I have served on this board for six years, and at that time I served as president, I've been chair of the education committee for five years, currently chair of the policy committee, also been on facilities and audits as well. Someone you may know from the CPS drama club, uh, my wife and I have co-coached the CPS most of the last five years, some know her, Ms. Bridget, some don't know me, Mr. Bridget, so you can figure out your acronym. Uh, I also coach Cornwall leaving, and Cornwall, so that's that. Uh, when I first ran for, I would say, district in a much, much different place, which has had two capital projects that have been bended down, giving these teen months, and our buildings were literally all former part. On top of that, our budgets had passed on by pretty razor thin margin each spring, sometimes by just a few percentage points. Uh, but in my time on the board, thanks to the work of many people, I'm proud to say that we have reversed both of those trends, passing the first major capital project in our district in over 20 years, which I was proud to lead the communication effort for, and in the last few years, passing budgets by much more comfortable margins due to a lot of factors, but including better communication. Uh, I think in this moment, as I run for the board however, we're, I'm facing a much different challenge. Uh, I'm not the new kid on the block anymore, I'm actually the longest serving member on the board, and I think in this moment in particular, that experience is important. Superintendent Dave has just announced that he will be leaving our district at the end of next month, and over the next year, we will likely be pursuing another capital project that picks up with the last one left off. I think the experience that I have will be important when tackling these two challenges. I think institutional knowledge is relevant, especially on Board of Education, and while I think every board needs new ideas and new members, I think it's a blend of having that new energy and the stability of experience that makes for the best combination. So that's why I'm running for a third term, I appreciate the opportunity to answer all the questions tonight, and I encourage everybody to come out and vote next Tuesday.
Hi, I'm Jamie Fox, thank you both so much, and Rachel, thank you to all the candidates, everyone watching, and I'm here. Um, I hope to be that new energy, the brightest star in town. I agree institutional knowledge is super important, having some new lifeblood come in. Um, I grew up in the public school system, so I know how important it is, I find very passionate about it. I moved to Cornwall for the schools, um, so I was very excited to, you know, come upon this. Um, I'm a mother of two children, I have a one-year-old and a four-year-old who's currently in UPK at Butterfield, so imagine my stance on that. Um, I'm a part, I'm a chronic joiner, I'm a part of Mothers Out Front with Lofton here, who has a clothing swap on Saturday, if anyone's interested, talk to me after, the Cornwall's Democratic Committee, and River Fest, June 1st is coming up. Um, I'm committee community member, I have board experience, I work with the New York City Brewers Guild, which is as fun as you can imagine, as well as the Brooklyn Public Library, and I currently, my, my real current job is I'm the partnerships director of the New York State Brewers Association, so I work with the board every day, with nonprofits and big budgets, um, so I think I have the experience that is necessary to run through the board. And I'm just really excited, very passionate about kids and schools and education.
Hi, I'm Lofton Reiser, and thank you guys again for organizing this opportunity for us to have you get to know us and us get to know some of the concerns of the community. Um, I, my background, I'm originally from South Carolina, and my background is in education, actually music education specifically, my undergraduate degree was in that, um, and then I moved on to, um, working in libraries for a lot of my adult career, um, so I definitely have a strong background in, um, education and information services. Um, I'm also a musical theater performer, and so I have a lot of experience with the arts. I've worked, um, in other places, um, I've worked in many places because I'm a military spouse, so we've moved around quite a bit, um, and I've, uh, worked with a lot of nonprofits, um, and very closely, in a lot of those cases, with the boards. Um, most recently, I worked for Virginia Symphony as their, the executive assistant to their board, um, as well as an assistant to their, um, CFO. So I've got a lot of experience with the nitty gritty of funding and finding money where there isn't any, and, um, making those numbers work, and just how it feels to be making decisions for an organization that you really care about, um, and I hope to bring some of those new ideas from other places and my experiences to this area. I'm happy to be here, we've been here about four years, and I'm at the point, my daughter is also four, and I'm at the point where I'm jumping into being more involved with the community, and this is my, I'm involved with Mothers Out Front, of course, but this is my big step into contributing, because I'm big on contributing to the community that I'm in. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and a big thank you to the PTO Trust for putting this forum together. I know it's not easy, but I think it's important that the community can hear from all the candidates running and make an informed decision, so I hope everyone is tuning in. So my name is Richard Schaffner, I am a lifelong resident of the community, I'm a proud graduate of the district, that's a distraction, I have some of that, and I'm finishing up my first term serving on the Board of Education. On the board, I have served as the chairperson of the visitation committee over the past two years, I have also served on the communication committee and the facilities committee. Off the board, I work for the Town of New Windsor Recreation Department, where I direct the town summer camp program. When camp's not in session, I run, uh, different programming for our community's youth, adults, and citizens, so I'm all over the place, and I also organize trips and community events. It's a really rewarding job. I am a member of the New Windsor Sons of the American Legion, I was actually just elected as an officer, first vice commander, and I was elected as the SEPTA officer as well. And I mention this not to boast about myself, but I care that I am involved, and I think when you're involved, it shows people that you care, and that's why I want to serve another three years on the school board. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, I'm Bas Chakra. Um, I moved from Wisconsin to West Point eight years ago, eight years and a few months, and, uh, when I, I came to New York just to take up a new job at West Point, and I lived for a year and a half in New Windsor, because I, my family was still in Wisconsin, and I waited a year and a half, my wife was still studying, she finished her diploma, and they moved. And when they moved, while they were still there, I was asking everybody, where's the best school district? At West Point, my colleagues, and, uh, pretty much everybody said, it is Cornwall. Okay, so I had the mindset, okay, when my kids, I have three kids in the district, when they come in, I'm gonna take them and register them, uh, to go, you know, schools. Uh, then I got more and more involved, like in their education, and I started kind of watching BOE, uh, you know, meetings on, online, and, uh, there were issues where I came and I spoke as a parent, you know, during those meetings. I got this interest, like, you know, okay, I know my students, my, my kids are going to the best schools, but I'd like to be more involved in their education, and I did run, and I won that big election three years ago, I served for three years on the Board of Education. Uh, so I believe that, like, while I'm helping my kids, and I'm honest about it, I am, I, you know, I tell you, you know, very frankly, I, I, I'm helping my kids, while helping my kids, I'm helping everybody else at Cornwall, and that is students. Uh, I am an educator, I, university professor, uh, I call myself a teacher, I served, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to remind all candidates that we do have a one minute time, one minute on each question. We're going to start with Jamie. The first question is, what do you, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Lofta. We're gonna start with Jamie. Our first question is, what do you consider to be the most critical challenge facing Cornwall Central School District at this moment, and how would you approach addressing it?
Thank you. It's a big question to go first on, someone who's not from the board. Um, I think right now, the thing, when I talk to parents, our biggest problem is transparency, um, which is no one's fault, right? I think when I moved to town, I was the same way, I was like, how do I get this information? How do I learn about the board? It's there for you, right? But it's just meeting parents where they are, who might not be able to come to the meetings, or who don't have the time to sit through the, you know, two hour meeting sometime. I think having the board get more out there in the community, and being able to talk about the issues that we're having, and being able to get live feedback from parents would go a long way. I also think obviously Terry Lee leaving, um, is a huge issue, right, that the board, the upcoming board is going to have to address. Um, again, I think community involvement, speaking to the parents, students, the teachers, the administration is the way that we're gonna, sort of, address that together.
What do you consider to be the most critical challenge facing Cornwall Central School District at this moment, and how would you approach addressing it?
I would say that in talking, I've also been talking with, uh, a lot of parents just in getting my signatures for this, um, and just trying to get a feel for the area. Um, I've heard a lot, I've heard some about transparency, I've heard a lot of, um, parents that are very concerned about bullying, um, in the area as a whole, um, and that there are a lot of messages coming from our, um, uh, not just ours, our local government, but our state government and our national government that, um, are confusing parents and making it difficult to know what's happening, um, and what is going to change, what's not going to change, and I think, um, going forward in this year especially, it's, sorry.
I better keep it to one minute. So I think, uh, critical challenge we have right now is funding, because we have a lot of needs in our district. We want to truly universalize UPK, we have space issues in our schools, and in order to solve a lot of these problems, it costs money, and I think we're getting to a point...
I keep seeing the district showing as number one in Orange County ranking, relying on one firm, that is not one of the best ranking firms to refer to. Uh, I have the numbers I can talk about maybe a little bit later. Uh, we are not the number one school district in the county. Are we number two, maybe number three? We can check, uh, but this is just to say that we have a lot of work to be done to go up the ranking, and the ranking is the reflection of what's going on in the school district. Yes, we are the best here in the area, in this region, close to West Point where I was referring to, and, uh, to go there, we need funding, Richard just mentioned that, we're not private school, private schools.
So I think the, uh, there is a very short-term answer, our most pressing issue is we need to find a replacement to Superintendent Dave, but if we're looking a bit longer term, I think the thing I always keep an eye on there are our, our enrollment trends, a lot of vowels in that. Uh, just an illustrative point, when my daughter Fiona entered Lee Road, she was, uh, they had to add a fifth class right before the, uh, school year started, to make it five classes in kindergarten, there were four classes in all the other grades. By the time she left, every class, every grade had five classes here in Lee Road, and we are currently just maxed out in space. Lee Road takes in the excess from other, uh, elementary schools, and Lee Road itself has no more space. What we don't know right now is if this is an enrollment bubble that will pass through the district and, uh, will subside in future years, I suspect it won't be. The other question is, will it get, will it increase? Will it stay the same? Will it increase? Either way, space will become an issue, and that is a big long-term challenge for us to solve.
Okay, question two, we're gonna begin with Lofton. How would you balance the need for fiscal responsibility with the goal of providing high-quality education for all students?
That's always the rub, isn't it? Um, is, things cost money, and if you have a cap on what you want to or are allowed to spend on those things, you have to get creative, um, and, uh, you know, you, you're not going to win that ever, it's gonna always be about balance. Um, it's gonna always be about prioritizing what is most important, not to the board members, but to the community, and, you know, that I think is where communication with the community is key. What do the parents want and feel like they need for their students? Um, because that, in my mind, is the function of the board, is to help parents raise their children, help them with what we provide as a school. Um, and so I would say, um, just making sure that the priorities are met first.
Yeah, I think it comes down to communication, listening to the community, our stakeholders, and making sure that they trust us and our judgment, and putting their children first. Because if you communicate and they do trust you, then there's more lying, because I would hate to be put in a spot where I have to choose between, you know, cutting budgets or keeping taxes at a minimum, and jeopardizing our students' education. So I think communication bridges that gap, and that's why it's so important that we do that.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How would you balance the need for, how would you balance the need for fiscal responsibility with the goal of providing high-quality education for all students?
Uh, again, it goes, this is a question, this is a fluid question, in a way, I mean, the answer is, is fluid, uh, it's based on the economic situation, and I mentioned in all the board meetings recently, involving discussion of budgets, that the economic situation we're in right now is not good. We're coming out of four years recession, okay? We're still recovering. The last thing our constituents want to hear about is a tax increase. I urged everybody on the board to go and reshuffle the numbers, to come out with zero tax levy increase, they didn't do that. I said I'm willing to go up to 1.99, psychologically, it's not 2.0, it's 1.99, and I have all the numbers to show you. Again, they didn't do that, they went up to, uh, 2.75, I believe. Uh, so that, that, what we need right now on the board are people who know how to strike the balance between everything.
So I think, uh, not everything, uh, in education has a dollar sign on it. I think one way to, just to repeat some of the question, deliver a high-quality education, still be fiscally responsible, it comes down to process, and making sure that from administration down, we are taking a very thorough process of analyzing the data in our academic trends, and then making corrective adjustments to our curriculum if necessary. A great example, we had a, uh, presentation from our assistant superintendent for instruction earlier this year, Megan Artenio, who identified some dips in scores in middle school math, I believe it was. But one of the ways to address that was not just, you know, let's hire another teacher or find another program, but was to make small adjustments in the curriculum earlier in the, uh, elementary school cycle, so in third, fourth grade, that would better prepare them for those kinds of issues later on. Those are the kinds of solutions that come from having a great organization that runs properly, that doesn't necessarily cost money.
Thanks. Um, to reiterate honestly what everyone said, right, this is like the big question of the board, right, how do we balance budget with a quality education? Number one, I don't think you can ever say that you would not put the education first and foremost, right? No one, I don't think anyone in this town would say that, would put education or not give the best education we had to our students. Um, kind of reiterating what Brandon said, it comes to planning, long-term planning, right, holistic planning with the board, it goes from, you know, kindergartners to superintendent teachers, everyone. Um, I don't think, yeah, that's honestly, I don't think I can even say anything more than what everyone else said.
Question number three, we're gonna begin with Richard. How do you think your affiliations with political or social groups outside the school board will influence your decisions on issues presented to the board?
Yeah, so for me, that's a simple question, I don't think anyone serving on the board should think they're a politician, and I think you should be neutral, because this position, serving your community on a school board, is non-political. We're here for one reason, and that's the students. So I, I, I'm neutral, that's basically how I would answer that, and I would hope everybody else would remain that way as well.
Would you like to read your question?
Yeah. Uh, this is a good question, because that was one of the policy I drafted, I didn't have time to say that, I served on the policy committee for the last three years. Uh, one policy, plain English, is keep the politics outside the perimeter of, you know, CCSD, period. No politics inside the school. What's bad about that is that the board voted it down, okay? Uh, you can go back to the meetings and figure it out, uh, they voted it down. I, and it's a very simple policy. Now, when it comes to a, a, a professor, a teacher discussing a political issue in the classroom, that teacher would have to be right in the middle, like unbiased, he'd let the students debate political idea, Trump is good, Trump's bad, Biden's good, Biden's bad, you stay in the middle, you just let the student debate, right? So it's not like taking anything outside of First Amendment.
Beth, can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I'm not missing a part of it.
Sure. How do you think your affiliations with political or social groups outside the school board will influence your decisions on issues presented to the board?
Gotcha. So I'm, uh, lucky enough to not be affiliated with any political group, so that part of it is not a challenge, but I think there's a, another part of your question, which is, you know, social groups, so you have friends, and I think in a small town, there will always be things that come to the board that might, uh, involve people that you know, and so I think that part of it is very relevant, and if you are following your, your North Star and not allowing those relationships to affect your thinking, then you might annoy people that are friends, that you're friends with, and you might have to sacrifice some friendships, and it's a very difficult thing to do. The metric that I've learned to, to use is, I think of, I'm not trying to please anybody right now, I'm not trying to please anyone I know, I'm trying to, I look ahead, the person I'm gonna be in 20 years, and I look back at the decisions I made. Will I be proud of the person that made those decisions? Will I cringe? Will I say, oh my God, I, I can't believe I sacrificed my integrity for, for something so small? So once you see things through that light, I think all of those situations become a lot clearer.
So interestingly, I listen to this question in a different way. Um, I'm a part of many different social groups, we'll call them, within town, and I feel like I get so many different inputs from people that I've never thought of before, and it informs my decision-making in a way that I wouldn't do on my own. So, you know, people who have children that are different than mine, or circumstances that are different than mine, um, might change how I vote or feel about something, and I think that's good and human, because if we, you know, I have my convictions, right, but I'm always learning and always getting new input, and I think that that is important for the board, because we need to represent all of the community, not just my interests.
Yeah, I, I agree, um, with regard to the, the actual concrete question... With regard to the actual concrete question, I'm not involved in any political organizations, but I agree that I don't feel like politics in and of themselves belong in the school board environment. However, everything, politics is not that separate from our life. So we are who we are and, you know, politics affects who we are and how we experience the world. And, you know, it is a reflection of our experiences, what our politics are. So as much as possible to take ourselves, out of ourselves completely, as Brendan was saying, and not make it about our comfort or what we want, but really honing in on what is best for the students. And at the end, that being our North Star of, you know, what is going to benefit the most amount of students?
Okay, Bass, we're going to start with you on this next question. What are your views on the current curriculum and what changes, if any, do you recommend?
You know, the state kind of, I mean, we don't create the curriculum. I mean, we follow whatever the state wants us to do. But what got my attention recently, not this school year, previous year, there were some exciting students in high school wanted an extra, I think, college course, AP or a high school course, or another one, in calculus. And the student advocate came here and spoke very eloquently, beautifully. And I urged everybody on the board to approve that course and it was not approved. So things that giving, and that give opportunities for our exciting students to get extra credit towards college, benefit from, I would like to add that because this is our power, as I said, you know, the state mandated curriculum. I mean, we can come up with a curriculum of our own.
So I'll start by saying I think our curriculum is very strong. So I don't think there are glaring deficiencies. But I would like to see, you know, where possible, challenging courses at different levels. But specifically when it comes to reading, you know, there's a big national debate about different approaches to reading, whether science of reading is superior or not. I think that our current approach, the science of reading approach is a proven by data. But if there's one shortcoming, it has been, it doesn't focus as much on long text books, of the bounds. We keep what's working on that, but still have kids challenged by serious folks and long reading from early age. I think that would help battle a lot of larger things that are happening to our kids' attention span through phones and social media and would just open their minds up to worlds that they cannot possibly imagine.
I'm so sorry to say this, but again, I'm going to piggyback off of what Brendan just said. I think we have a very strong curriculum. I'm always impressed by our split district and by the numbers coming out of the school. Talking about the science of reading and reading about it a little bit. The one thing that scares me is, you know, and of course, you're going to read both sides of the story, but like, it doesn't focus on the love of reading. And as someone who loves reading, I just want that for my children so much. And I hope that they don't get bogged down in like the phonics of it all and they don't see, you know, the forest, the trees, whatever, and learn that reading is just like the most beautiful thing you can do, especially in our world of smartphones and two-second clips. And beyond that, honestly, if I was on the board, I would love to speak, who better?
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback off of that by just saying that I think we should listen to experts. I think we should listen to teachers. I think we should listen to the people who have spent, you know, their lives doing this. Rather than trying to make any decisions, I know the board doesn't have a lot of power over curriculum, but make any decisions as people who don't really have any expertise in that. My mother is a reading interventionist, actually. She spent half her career in special ed and the other half in reading intervention. So I have a unique perspective on the reading question. I won't get into it right now. But meaning-based reading, and so if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to talk with you more about it. But she's written a book about it, so.
This is a tough question to go last on. But I'll say I think we do have a strong curriculum here and I credit our teachers for that and our staff because they're the ones that make the difference. Now, curriculum, as Bass mentioned, is set by the state. So we don't make curriculum decisions. But I believe discussion and collaboration is important. And I think that's an argument as to why we should look at forming a curriculum committee that would include board members, teachers, community members, families. I think that would help us all come to an understanding of where we're at now and what we could do to maybe strengthen the mandates set by the state here in Cornwall.
This question is going to start with Brendan. How would you propose maintaining open communication between the school board, parents, students, community members, and our VTOs?
Well, I think it's always hard when you have busy people and conflicting schedules. But I think having more community events would be a great start. I think the one thing that you learn whenever you're involved in communication and certainly with the Communication Committee, I understood this, it's not just about getting the message out there, it's about receiving what people have to say. It's a very difficult thing to do and stay consistent in that. And so it certainly can always use improvement there. But I think that's the, you know, it's the only way to ensure that we're getting as many viewpoints as possible. I would love to start a committee that has, is a little more broad than just the Board Communication Committee. You know, it's kind of limiting in its scope. And work with other organizations around the district, but also the community to have instead of just an event where you go out to the community and say, show up, those members are on the committee itself and we're all doing it together.
Just from my line of work, I can say this takes work, takes so much work. Bridging the gap that people feel because I feel like people are already, you know, people get, you know, no one's listening to what I'm saying, so now I'm not going to say it anymore. And I think that, you know, when that happens, it's really hard to bridge that gap. So I don't think we're there yet. And I think that the, you know, the Board of Education has a great opportunity to get out there and speak to the teachers and parents and the administration. And the nice thing about it is our community is, you know, it is small, right? And we do have a ton of community events. I'm always in awe of Cornwall. I'm still, I've only been here four years, so I still feel like I'm in the honeymoon phase. But, you know, even having the Board of Education have a table at Burger Fest, right? Thousands of people show up there. Just an opportunity for people to come up and say, you know, good things, bad things, whatever. I think we could do surveys, you know, I do that a lot in my job right now, like just sending out surveys to teachers, to parents, you know? Tell us the good, the bad, and the ugly. They can even be anonymous, right? Tell us, you know, what you really think. And I think publishing those surveys goes a long way to making people feel more comfortable about saying things.
Yeah, agreed. Both counts. I think having more avenues for dialogue to be open and not just making it one thing. You know, giving the opportunity in various ways. Some people prefer speaking with someone one-on-one. Some people do prefer filling out a survey than maybe anonymous or... And my work with nonprofits as well has shown me the value in that kind of thing where, you know, you do get to poll your group, whatever that may be, teachers, parents, and find out what's important to them or what they're having issues with. And they have an opportunity to address that. And I agree, publish it so that they feel heard. And then there's a response that they can look to that's concrete from the board.
Yeah, so I think there's numerous ways you can go about this. I think we have to use the tools we have to our advantage, like social media. Quite a lot of people are on social media, so I think communicating through that would be effective. I also think just visibility at events. I mean, I've been to many community events. Thankful enough to work in a portion of our community and I have some great conversations with people. And I think when you're actively listening to your community members, that makes a big difference. But I would propose, you know, board members just making themselves more visible. And maybe even having some sort of board committee that makes themselves available at different public spots like two houses or, you know, a local hangout. Just so people feel more comfortable to approach you and have a conversation and you point them in the right direction to whatever their concern is.
Thanks. Yeah, this is a very good question because what we're doing so far, there's a lot room for improvement. I can tell you that when I first came on the board three years ago, the public comments at every board meeting, they used to go unanswered and I pushed for answering the questions from the public during the BOE meeting with this high visibility on video and everything. And what we did is we modified, we adjusted the policy that would allow the board to come up with answers one meeting later, not right away. And I'm still unhappy with that. And at times, I mean, even like we don't give the public the answers they're looking for after one meeting. I'm not happy with that. There's room for more there. I don't have the whole time to keep talking about it. Open meetings law limit us in what we can do.
Okay, Jane, I'm going to go with you. How would you select an effective hiring committee to support the Board of Education in appointing a new superintendent and what qualities do you find important in our district?
I feel like that's the question of the day, of the month, or whatever. First of all, I think it's really important that we involve all aspects of the community, right? So the Board of Education, teachers, administration, parents, community members. The schools are a huge part of this town. And I think everyone has statement, even if they don't have children in the school. And it's really important to get input from everyone. And what was the second part? It was qualities. I mean, you know, the qualities, I think, should be the superintendent, someone who's inclusive, someone who's empowering to children, someone the kids can look up to and feel comfortable, like, you know, obviously knowledgeable and smart, right? These are the things. Some of the teachers feel like, you know, has their back. But at the end of the day, you really want some that the kids feel like, you know, this person gets me and I feel comfortable and see the value in them.
Yeah, I think involving as many different facets of the community as we can in the decision. I mean, it's never going to be a perfect process. We're never going to be able to make everyone happy with a decision like that, as big as that. But I think, you know, making sure that everyone is heard and that we take as many boxes as possible. And, you know, hopefully there's a candidate out there that's going to do that. But making sure that that person is someone who is, knows what they're undertaking, if they've not done that job before, but has the experience comparable to really tackle it without having such a learning curve. Because I think we're in a place as a district where we need somebody to kind of hit the ground running. And, you know, just someone who, never mind.
Yeah, so this is one of the most important roles of the school board, is hiring and firing the superintendent. And now we have to begin our search for our next superintendent. Hiring committee, I think we need to include everyone. Students, teachers, staff, parents, community members, even those without children in the district because they're part of this district too. And I think that will help bridge the transition to our new leader, whoever that may be. Some qualities that I think are important is, one, experience. Two, being able to deal with different personalities and getting along with the board, the staff, and community. And three, I agree, I think it should be someone that students can look up to and say they're happy to have him or her as their superintendent.
The question was two-part. Can you repeat?
How would you, how would you select an effective hiring committee to support the Board of Education in appointing a new superintendent? And what qualities do you find important in our district's new superintendent?
Thank you. The hiring committee should involve everyone, just echo what Richard said. I remember when I was in grad school, I was part of the hiring committee that hired the dean of engineering. I was a student, okay? So this is very important and thanks, Richard. You have to involve all the stakeholders. As values, I'm looking for credential slash experience, definitely. No compromise there whatsoever. Rapport and approachability with everybody, with the teachers. There was a concern, we heard about before that, maybe that was not the case at all times. We did talk about it before. Rapport and approachability of that person is a huge and goes a long way and role model for everybody, for the students and for the teachers.
Can we, we have time.
You want to skip me? Now that I've been put on the spot. So I think, number one, you have as many stakeholder committees as you can, and that makes sense. So I think you have distinct stakeholder committees for teachers. You want to know administrators, you're going to be working directly with this person. And then you want a nice blend of parents. And, you know, even within that group, you'd want some diversity. You would want some teachers that have been in the district for 25 years and some teachers that maybe have only, you know, were just granted tenure in the last few. And just try to find as broad a spot of people as you can. As far as the qualities that I would be looking for and I would hope that the board as a whole would be looking for, you want somebody who is committed to academic excellence, of course. I think you want someone who is a great communicator, not just with us, the board, but with the public, with the staff and teachers. And I think someone who has a soft touch. You know, we are a pretty small, let's say small to medium-sized district and being able to be personal with everyone in this kind of district is very important.
We do have time to continue the questions we'd like to ask. Let's go on to start with Lofton. If you had the ability to divert funds from one budget category to support another, what would it be?
I wish we did not need to spend so much on security. That would be in a perfect world. That is not the case. But in a, you know, if, this would not be a realistic situation, I think, anyway. So we're going to go with the perfect world scenario. I would love it if we didn't need to protect our children as we need to in this day and age. But if we could take that money and put it towards the arts, this would be no surprise to anybody who read my bio. I would love it if we, you know, could make especially things like drama more accessible to everybody. Because right now it's a club and, you know, the participation isn't, you know, something that, you know, if a child can't, you know, afford or their parents can't afford to have them in an extracurricular like that, then, you know...
So I feel like this is kind of a trick question because I think we put forward a budget that I, you know, support. I think we did a good job with that and I don't know where I diverted these funds from. But let's say we came up with funds, I would want to put that towards first UPK. I'd want to make that truly universal. And I would like to invest more into our buildings and infrastructure because our buildings are old, they need repair. Like I said earlier, we have space issues in this district. Our enrollment is growing by the year. And it's going to come to a time where we may need to look at building another elementary school. So those are two things I would like to divert money to. So those are two things I would like to divert money to. Not going to answer where that would come from because I feel that's like, that's a trap.
I think everybody knows I'm voting no on the budget. I wasn't happy with the budget. I wanted the people who worked on the budget to go back to the going board and reshuffle everything just so we don't increase the tax levy. They didn't do that. To divert money from here and there, I'm going to give you two quotes. If you look carefully at the budget statement, there are $28,000 plus, $28,312 for the board members to go on conferences and to pay their professional society memberships. $28,000. I don't want the taxpayers to pay for my conferences and my professional society membership. There was another item, district meeting contractual went from $13,000 to $46,700. $33,000 increase, that's $251 increase. What is district meeting contractual?
So I guess it would be a little disingenuous if I had a whole bunch of things I would do to change the budget when I was one of the people who just worked on the budget and voted yes on it. So it's very, what it points to is the difficulty of being on the board, is that it always comes down to choices. And everyone would love to fund everything, but that will always come at the expense of something else as long as we are publicly funded and we don't have private revenue sources. I would spin the question a bit to, you know, what do I think should, could be funded more? And it's been said before, but I've been a vocal supporter of the arts and I think one thing that we're always proud of with arts kids is how resourceful they are. You know, we turn their challenges into virtue and say, oh, they're always given nothing and look what they create. And I ask, what would they create if we gave them just a little bit more than nothing? So that would be a, that would be a dream scenario for me. And then, of course, I mean, attend any facilities committee meeting, we have a long list of things to do throughout the district, so I would love to eat at that list.
I just want to say that I really appreciate Lockton's answer because I also just, yeah, no security. Everyone's safe and perfect. But of course, it's something we live in, unfortunately. So I do appreciate the budget this year. As long as it gets approved, we're putting more money into our safety. That being said, I don't know where we divert money from, right? I don't have that intimate knowledge. I don't think that I can speak on that because I don't, you know, I looked at the budget, I don't know where that would even come from, right? It's a tight budget. We didn't move the money we had. I mean, at the end of the day, if I was going to give more money, who do I think deserves it the most? Teachers. I would like to give more money to incoming teachers and offer better packages because, you know, as time goes on, we'll be needing to hire more teachers. Outside of that, of course, UPK. And I really like to answer it up. Resourcefulness is the art of it because, yeah, imaginative.
Our last question, I want to start with Richard. What motivates you to seek a position for reelection on the Board of Education? And what specific goals or contributions do you hope to achieve in this role?
So I have always had a passion for giving back to my community. And that started from a young age. I think since I graduated from Cornwall, I have demonstrated that through my roles in different volunteer positions, including this one. Some goals for my next term is to continue to be transparent and communicate with the community because I think that's what's important and that's what people value and respect in the school board. And as I mentioned before, I would like to see UPK become truly universal. I want to see our teachers continue to be fairly compensated. And I'm proud of the contract those agreed upon. I think that's a step in the right direction. So I think we're making progress, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And that's why I'm hoping that you'll support me for another term on the school board. Thank you.
I wasn't clear with the question, right? Yeah.
What motivates you to seek a position or reelection on the Board of Education? And what specific goals or contributions do you hope to achieve in the role?
I'm still on the board like everybody else served. It's a volunteer position, it's not a paid job. So this is finding some time to give back to the community you live in, you really are attached to. With my background in education, 14 years, mechanical engineering professor, university professor, I know education, I know teachers. I like the teachers to look at me as one of them, not a board member. I feel exactly what they feel, the long nights grading papers and what have you, preparing for a lecture to make it better. That's why I'm volunteering here. I'm not volunteering somewhere else in a different industry, per se. Three years went just like this. I feel like I have an unfinished job. I want to finish what I started, what I started working on. I mentioned like the policy of keeping politics outside. Voted down, I hope we'll vote it, vote yes on it.
So if you asked me six years ago when I first ran for the board, if I would be sitting here running for a third time, I would have said heck no in a different way. But when you go through this experience, and, yeah, I think we all have a role to play. And now that I sit here at the end of my second term, the longest-term member, I think back to some of the people that served on the board when I first entered. We had Larry Berger had served, you know, I have a joke, a million years, but close to 15 years or so. Jim Cugelli had served 12 years. Before that, Dave Moretto had served 12. And these, they carried so much institutional knowledge. And their testimony and stories, when we would discuss issues, were so valuable that I thought, as I look at this current situation, I thought, you know, that's a role that I might have to step into now. And I think it's important for every board to have that. So although it's not, it's not an office that I seek, you know, for my own personal benefit, I do feel like that's a role that needs to be filled. And if there was a person to fill it, then I have responsibility to do so.
I fear that I am a child in the 80s and 90s, much like the be the change you wish to see in the world type of person. So I am, you know, very into volunteering. The school board is super important to me. So when I moved into town, my kids started attending the CCSD district. I was like, okay, well, you know, I'm not going to complain about things, but I'm not going to do something about it. So that's my answer for why I'm running. I am a great mediator. I listen to people on all sides, every side of the table, whatever you want to say. And I think it's important to have someone who can see every viewpoint on the board. And my legacy is that I think this district is incredible and I want it to be better.
I am motivated to join the school board because I have a daughter and she's starting in school. As Jamie said, you know, I don't want to complain about something if I'm not actively a part of being, you know, the change or progress, you know? I'm not, I don't think that things need to dramatically change for this school district. But is there room for improvement? Always. And I'm one of those people that likes to just say, why not? And really look at the challenges and what the barriers are. And my background in nonprofit work has helped me be very creative a lot of times with finding solutions to getting around those barriers however we can. And I hope that I could bring that to the board, just that creativity of arts people that we talked about.
Okay, we are up to our closing statements. We've got two minutes and we're going to start with Bass.
Thank you. Yeah, we, those one minutes were really challenging. I never managed to finish our idea. But that's fine. Thank you very much for putting this forum together. Really appreciate it. People who watch the videos online for the last three years, maybe noticed something about me. I'm not complacent, I'm not conformist. You'd see that we're nine members on the board. Very, I mean, I would say love forms went eight to one. Guess who that one is? Me. I have my beliefs, I defend my beliefs, I explain them, right? And we have a democracy on the board, you know, five-four. Whoever is of the five would win with that resolution, with the idea. As I said earlier, and just to say, I accept that. I mean, I don't feel bad when I'm the only one voting against the resolution while everybody is supporting it. I'm currently in the last three years, as I said earlier, I'm a teacher. We are three teachers on the board, Elora, Christian, they're here with us tonight, and myself. So being a teacher on the board, I see it as a big plus. I'm not the voyeur, I'm not the businessman. You know, I'm not the famous guy. I came from education, I'm staying with education. I'm an advisor, capstone, a project advisor that's the senior of the fourth year in the cadets at West Point. I want to continue to be engaged in education. I don't want to go far from it. And again, I don't have, okay, thanks.
So again, to the PTO Trust, thank you for putting this event together every year. It's such a service to the community. I just want to implore everybody to not only get out to vote next Tuesday, but also to stay involved as much as you can. I think one of the things that really defining characteristics of any great school district, of any great community, is how involved the parents are, the community members. You know, it's one of the things when people move to Cornwall, I noticed the same myself. My God, how many people, you know, sign up for Little League and things like that? These are the small ways of, the small windows into the big things. And I just want that to extend as much to the schools as possible. A great school district is a fragile thing. I think it's easy to assume that because Cornwall has had a great school district for so long, that that's just, that has a momentum of its own and we always will. But we only will if every generation that comes along makes sure that we do. It's the spirit of volunteerism that inspires a lot of people to run for the board, this sense of if not me, then who? But even if you're not sitting up here, like I said before, everyone has a role to play. That starts with voting, but maybe that continues in the fall with joining a committee or finding a way to stay involved. If we all do that, and that is what gives me the most hope that our school district will continue to advance and have a very bright future.
Thank you. And again, I should have to thank everyone up here because obviously we're all vying for a volunteer spot, which is amazing, again, a testament to the type of place Cornwall is. As Brendan said, like when I moved here, I don't think I met a parent who wasn't involved in some way, in some committee or some group. It's awesome. For someone like me, these are the people. This is great. I wanted to go back to a compliment someone gave me once. It was a boss that I worked with years ago. And it was a flippant remark and she just said, well, I know if I say something to Jamie, she's just going to do it. And that's the type of person I am. So if that's the type of person on a school board who say, you mentioned something to me at an event, hey, can you mention this at the school board? I'm going to do it. And if I think it should be done, it's going to get done. And, yeah, I just believe in this town a lot and I want to give back what it's given me so hard. Thank you.
I definitely agree with the things that everyone has said about community involvement being so important. And I think we're all so busy in our lives. I hope to provide, if I'm elected to the board, a, someone who will listen and will also do the necessary research to know what our options are and what, what the issues actually entail. That's something that I'm really big on and that I often feel like is missing from a lot of discussions is I don't like to speak on something if I don't have some kind of research rabbit hole, is what my husband calls them. Just to make sure that I'm operating with the best amount of information that I can for the students. And that's another thing that I didn't get a chance to mention that really motivated me to run for board is I know that I don't make decisions lightly and that I really try to understand what I'm making decisions about. And that not only, you know, includes consulting experts or doing research on something, but it also is the listening to the community. And the more that everybody can be involved in having a say of like, oh, I don't know that you've thought about this option or you maybe are not present in this part of the community to see this impact and how it's affecting us. Can you bring that information to the board so they're more informed? I really think that together we can do this.
All right. Again, I want to thank the PTO Trust for putting this together. It was really great. And I learned a lot about fellow candidates here. And I want to just give everyone here a shout out for stepping up to run. It's not easy. And I give credit to anybody that steps up, puts themselves in the spotlight to volunteer their time. It's truly a great thing to see. And I have to say, we are so lucky to live in a community like Cornwall where people willingly step up. I mean, I, at all the events I've been at, there's been parents and community members volunteering, whether that's at the concession stands at varsity football or with the PTOs. It's truly a great thing and we cannot take that for granted because not every community and school district has that kind of support from our community. So I want to thank everyone who does that. I'm going to end with this. So I was actually watching last year's forum and I heard a question asking about, what book would you use to describe how you view academics? The book I chose, because I was prepared and thought maybe it would be asked, was Pete the Cat. I don't know if anyone knows what Pete the Cat is. It's a very nice Chilton's book and I've read it to many children in my role. And the moral of that book is Pete and his friends, they always go on adventures and they face obstacles and challenges along the way, but they always find a way to get to their destination point. And that's what I want every student in Cornwall to learn from a young age. So I hope everyone gets out and votes on next Tuesday, May 20th. And thank you for being here and thank you for watching.
Thank you for stilling my closing statements. Oh, yes, thank you guys very much for stepping up and, you know, being here tonight. Thank you everyone for coming. We will be posting the link. Obviously, it's on the BOE YouTube channel, so please, you know, encourage people to watch it, re-watch it. Get out there next Tuesday to vote. And remind everyone that tomorrow evening at seven is the budget forum here at CES. So that's important to protect and boost out there as well. So then, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.